Two, one. Good morning, Leavenworth citizens. Welcome to the mayor's Facebook Live Town Hall number eight. So we've been doing this for a while, for two months, and on every Wednesday. And if you hear that siren in the background, that is just the monthly first Wednesday of the month, testing of the emergency system sirens in, of course, the city and Leavenworth County, so don't be alarmed. But today I have the city manager, Mr. Paul Kramer, with me as I always do, and I've got a special guest expert today, Representative Jeff Pittman. Jeff is the representative for the forty-first district of the Kansas House, which includes most of Leavenworth, north of Vilas Street, and all of Fort Leavenworth. Jeff is a Leavenworth native and was elected to the Kansas State House of Representatives in 2016, and began his first term in January of 2017. And I've asked him to come here and give an update on things that pertain to what he does as a representative of our forty-first district to the state, and I appreciate him coming. And if you have questions as he provides the information, please, you know, type it out, and we'll ask Jeff the questions after he's finished. Jeff?
Thank you so much, Mayor Mike. I appreciate that. I am Jeff Pittman. And I want to start off by saying I'm going to focus today on especially what's going on with the pandemic, what's going on at the state level in particular, focusing in on some issues, kind of an update on Lansing Correctional Facility. Then I'm going to talk a little bit about Department of Children and Family, talk a little bit about the Department of Labor and what they're doing to provide assistance to all our families, citizens here in Kansas, as we go through this time. And then I'm going to pop out and talk a little bit about the longer term, you know, as we come out of this, what are we doing in terms of transportation? And so if that's okay with you, Mike.
That sounds like great. That's exactly why I asked you to come here.
Thanks. First, I want to say just a shout out to all my essential workers out there. Thank you, thank you, thank you for doing what you've done over the last couple of months, and as you continue to do your job safely. And to the emergency workers, to all the staff here, as well as our correction workers and out there that are working. We know that Lansing Correctional Facility has been a hotbed of COVID activity out there. So I went out and I chatted with the Secretary of Corrections yesterday to get an update about what was going on there. And as you know, we held about, it's about two thousand, twenty-two hundred inmates out there. And we know we've got correction workers in our city here, we've got family members of correction workers, and we also have family members of inmates. And so I'm going to start off with just what's going on with the inmates this week. They have moved the inmates from the old facility into the newly constructed facility. They were doing that for the last week and a half. They were putting in overtime. They got assistance from the National Guard logistically to help move some of the prisoners over from the old to the new. And the reason that they are really doing that is, A, the ventilation system on the new facility is so much better in terms of isolating and taking the air out of the facility so that the virus doesn't get communicated more than it has to. And B, they have a better capability of segregating and separating individuals in that new facility. They also have the KDHE, which is the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, they've got a viral control expert embedded in there, and he's been there since April. And so what he's been doing is advising them on better ways to isolate tested positive inmates. And they put them into, they now have a strategy, both from a cleansing perspective, obviously the masks, but also how do you keep groups of prisoners together that, A, might be positive, might be positive at risk, might be negative or don't show symptoms, asymptomatic, and those who are not at risk versus at risk. They call this cohorting, apparently. I've learned quite a bit about that since I've gotten into this. And this week, or maybe at the end of this week, I believe, KDHE is going to provide an antibody test to the LCF. And what this is, is they look for short-term antibodies and long-term antibodies, and it's a quick sophisticated test, and that's going to help them better isolate those that are still able to communicate the disease. That's the short-term antibody. And then as people come out of the test-positive state, they're looking for the long-term antibodies, apparently. And that means that they've shed the virus, and they could go back to the general population. Now, what we do know is that they've started testing, broad testing, across the facility, and I think they're finishing that up. They've got five hundred and fifty Lansing inmates, five hundred and fifty-one as of yesterday afternoon, but they expect that to grow. They're being quite honest, they think it's going to, actually, when all the tests come back that they've administered, they expect a positive rate of about three hundred or four hundred more inmates to show up as having asymptomatic positive. Through this cohorting process, they're going to isolate, quarantine, keep groups together, and they're hoping that the tested positive, they're going to continue that process to isolate those individuals. We do know that three inmates have passed away, five are in the hospital, they're all in their fifties and seventies, and most everybody had underlying issues, so that's unfortunate, obviously. In terms of the staff at LCF, there's a number of those at risk as well that have stepped out of the roles while this is going on, and a lot who have tested positive. When I say a lot, as of yesterday, there were eighty-eight that had tested positive. And when they test positive, they are, they're moved to their house, they're asked to stay home, and then they are, go through the quarantine process or the self-isolation, and then they get tested as they can. What that means, though, is that the staffing, they have now an exacerbated staffing situation, meaning they've got less staff to work with, the staff are working overtime. Even though the new facility requires supposedly less staff, they're having to ask folks to go overtime, they're supplementing it a little bit with National Guard, and they're supplementing with other workers from around the state. And they are offering meritorious pay to those who work two weeks continuously of an extra $400 if they do work with no unscheduled leave. So with that, they're expecting this to be more controlled. They understand that the medical provider wasn't necessarily taking it as seriously. We still, you know, we still need the workers and the inmates to continue to practice best practices, you know, with masks and making sure that it cleans. We, you know, there's talk of having some folks go out to community supervision. That's a capability that the secretary has, actually, they can actually release or put onto community supervision in their homes under early house arrest for those who are getting ready to, you know, leave. And so they've started that with six, those who are about to get out within six weeks. They've got about fifteen juveniles who they've approved to go back to their homes in this house arrest model, as well as fifteen adults. Now, this is a new program, it's been in place for quite a while in the statutes, but no one's really executed it in the last couple decades, as far as I can tell. And so this is a new method, and they're doing this as a trial basis. So that's that with the LCF. Now, Mike, do you have any questions on LCF? I mean, I'm going to go into a couple other things first, but do you have anything in particular about LCF?
No, they're just, obviously, they're being able to get the tests that they need to do this. I mean, they're on a glide path to almost test all the inmates, don't you think?
All the inmates and all the staff. They're starting the staff now, and by next week, they should have everybody tested.
They probably would have wanted to have done that earlier, but I don't think there were sufficient tests available.
Absolutely.
Okay, no, but that's a good rundown on that, and I don't have any further questions. Are there any from the audience?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things that are being reported. If you look at the county numbers, they are separating out the inmates versus our Lansing, our Leavenworth Lansing population, obviously, Leavenworth County information. So it does drive our numbers up when you look at the aggregate, but when you dive down into it, that's driving a lot of our numbers up here in the county. So when we look at other things that are going on, we can look at how some of the other state agencies are helping out. And I tend to think about the Department of Children and Family, DCF, because, you know, a lot of those kids are at risk in the foster homes. We have some seventy-three hundred kids in the Kansas foster care system. And DCF is working, their offices are closed. If you happen to go into the offices locally, you might notice that you can't get in there, but they are, they have enhanced phone services. Their number, of course, is 888-369-4777. And they are continuing to take, of course, Kansas Protection Report Center calls, and that's basically those who are noticing abuse or neglect, and that number is 1-800-922-5330. You can also find us on votepittman.com, that's my website where we have a COVID resource page, as well as other pages across the state. We do know that food assistance applications are up by ninety-five percent this year, as we could expect. Cash assistance from TANF are up, and childcare assistance is up as foster families deal with school closures. The program has been enhanced with some money to help out foster kid families by enhancing some of the money they get, but they've also provided tablets and through a federal grant program to adult, young adults that are now required to do distance learning. One of the great things I think they've introduced is the Hero Relief Program, and the Hero Relief Program helps out with those emergency workers that are out there, the essential workers, like first responders, food and agro-turor workers, judicial branch, National Guard, child and adult protective specialists, care specialists, healthcare workers, and those types. And it helps provide a grant, by providing a grant for childcare assistance while we're going through this pandemic. There's also the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, I want to make sure people know about. This is a program that provides an annual benefit to help those with qualifying, you know, qualifying households pay for heating bills in the winter. The application period is usually January to March, but it's been reopened due to an allocation of fourteen million in additional federal funds for that program under the CARES Act. So if you qualify for that, make sure you know that you can apply for that. Maybe you found yourself into a position where you now qualify for that, so I want to make sure people know about that. As we move on to other types of assistance programs, obviously, the government has come in, in the interest of the citizen's safety, and closed down a number of different jobs and business opportunities, businesses out there. So what they've done through the CARES Act, through other programs at the state level, is provide assistance to folks going through the hardship, the financial hardships. And just want to mention, if you probably already know about these, but I want to go through the rundown, there's the Payroll Protection Plan that, I don't know if that's the right.
It's Paycheck Protection Program.
That's it, thank you, PPP, I've been calling it.
We've been talking about it.
Yeah, obviously, that's a loan that you get from the federal government up to, I know, a max, depending on your salary payroll, for different small businesses, through different local banks. Typically, you have to have an account at the bank, and I know that that's been successful in some ways, a little controversial in other ways, but it's out there. There's the Unemployment Insurance Program, there was a number of issues at the Kansas level. The Department of Labor had a challenge with some of their outdated, it was a thirty- or forty-year-old system based in mainframe technology that was running. It was slated to have an upgrade, but unfortunately, those steps were just about a year behind this pandemic. The pandemic hit, and they were having a hard time keeping up with the volume. They fixed that. A lot of people were trying to file for unemployment in the system, go on, if you qualify, go on to the system, make sure you apply for that. It's now up and running. With that, you get your normal unemployment per week, plus an extra $600.
That's important.
The PUA, which stands for the Pandemic Unemployment Insurance, is another act, and that's for independent contractors, business owners who are, small business owners who have gone out of business temporarily. I've got a seamstress in town, for example, I've got hairdressers and things like that, barbers, who are going to qualify for the PUA. That system is a new system, it's going to be, it's managed much like the unemployment insurance. One files at the state level, and then gets benefits on a weekly basis for a defined set of time. Unfortunately, that money's sitting there, the system has, it's supposed to be up and ready for people to log into it and work it. It's an additional aspect that's not normal in Kansas, so they've had to add some stuff to the system. That's supposed to be available for May 12th, May 14th, in that time range, and then payments are supposed to be coming out a week or two after that. There's a lot of people frustrated by that, and I absolutely understand that. I'm frustrated by it, but it is what it is, and the money will be backpaid. Importantly, you just need to log in at least once and file the claim, and then stay on them to make sure that everything is legit. You won't get a response back necessarily right away, but as a system comes up, you're going to have much more communication with the Department of Labor. There's another program that is called the Pandemic Emergency Unemployment Compensation. Now, this is interesting, because as I understand it, it will, it will apply to those who would have qualified for unemployment, but maybe they've maxed out on their benefits since 2018. We do have max horizons of unemployment that's available in the state of Kansas by statute. This one would extend some benefits to those folks, I think by about thirteen weeks. It's a thirteen-week extension to regular benefits. And it also apparently applies to those with no rights to regular benefits under any laws, and so that's a very interesting one to keep in your sights.
Is that also through the Department of Labor?
Yes, all these will be available through the Department of Labor.
Good.
All right, moving on. Transportation. Now, as we, we're going to be coming out of this, we're gradually reopening. If you go out, you can look on that website I mentioned, votepittman.com, but it's around, there's a, there's a chart that basically outlines some of the, what's open, what's closed. This governor has it on her website in a different format, it's talking about the different businesses. And there's a phase one, phase two, phase three type approach that she's using. This is, you know, it's, phase one is supposed to be, they come in fourteen-week increments unless something happens. As we go through this, we expect the number of positives to, the rate to decline, hopefully. But we also understand that we're going to have some challenges across the state in different areas, and so the state has given a general guidance in terms of what they're willing to accept as reasonable risk at this point, but then expecting the locals, cities, the counties to take it, you know, take the bull by the horns, if you will, and as things get really hot in a certain area, they would be the ones that would be closing those things down. As we get out of this, we're looking at the longer term, and one of the big things that we passed at this Kansas State Legislature this year was the Eisenhower Transportation Plan. It's a ten-year plan, we usually have ten-year plans when we talk about transportation spending, KDOT, and I'm excited about it. The provisions in there look good, we're finally, we're in a position to properly fund our roads. Unfortunately, there's some uncertainty now with the pandemic and where we're at as a state. We'll have to continue to watch the budget and these types of things. But one of the things I am excited about is we have raised, you know, through interaction from myself and some of the other locals, the visibility of our bridge, our Centennial Bridge, as part of the KDOT plan. It's in there, it's in their scope, they now see the importance of that, and so I'm very excited. I'm hoping that it's going to be inside of their newly released projects in a month or month and a half or so. Can't guarantee that, they haven't released that, but if it's not, I'm very optimistic it will be soon after that, that we would have that bridge having a plan, we're having more throughput and better safety. So what else can we talk about? I think that's.
We do, one question.
Okay.
Mike, Jeff, this kind of goes with what you were talking about a little bit with the state budget. The question comes from Steve, and he asks, with the shortfall of sales tax and gas taxes, is state looking at how it allot funding to local governments? I think the mayor and I would be interested in that question as well, as there have been any detailed talk about those funds that come to local governments.
Well, you know, there's the federal funds that are going to the state for the CARES Act, that's going to get allocated. I am not privy to how the sales and property tax, we, you know, as a legislative unit, we haven't discussed how we might reallocate that down. If you were going to, if you were going to reallocate from this, I mean, what would you be looking for from a city level?
What would we do as far as our budget? Look at projects, capital projects, I think is where the city's going to look first.
Just to reduce the budget?
Yeah, as far as expenditures, without any revenue enhancements, I think that's the direction we're trying to go, trying to go with. So I'm sure the state's kind of probably in the same boat.
We are, I mean, we're looking at, we've got, for this year, it looks we're okay, just because of where we were at when we passed the budget a couple, month and a half ago. But, you know, in the next year after that, and the year after that, we're at shortfall positions, as the current projections. We're going to have to reassess. One of the things that we're doing today, the legislative leader, the LCC, the Legislative Coordinating Council, is actually meeting today to decide whether we're going to come back this next week, or if it's going to be just a final action on May 21st. One of the things that we could do if we go back is take up budget and seeing what we can do from a provisional standpoint, if the revenues continue to fall as they're being projected right now. And if we did that, we will have to make some tough decisions about services, where we would take those cuts at this point. When we talk about allocating money back down to the city and the counties, one of the things that was in the governor's budget that didn't make it through was the ad valorem tax, you know, that's, that would enhance our local communities if we were able to put that through. I'm not sure how that, the prospects for that look right now, just because we're going to be looking at, finding, if business comes back and the economy starts booming, and we don't have a huge infection rate across the state of Kansas, that could be a good thing, it might have a different picture. But at this point, it's too early to tell what we're going to do. Thank you.
I did have a, so before, when did the legislature last meet, you know, with everybody there? Was it in March sometime?
It was in March, gosh, I don't even remember the date right now, it's like mid-March.
Was the budget for the upcoming budget year, fiscal year, was it passed by that time, or before you all left?
So what we have to do constitutionally each year is pass a budget. Because we were uncertain about where we were going to be come at the middle of May, we knew that we had to pass a budget, so we passed a version of the budget that was at least a minimum that we were willing to accept. And we passed that out through the House and through the Senate, and that was signed off on. Normally, what happens is we have a revenue estimate that comes in middle of April, and then we adjust the budget in May to finalize it, and it's called Omnibus. We put off any kind of controversial type, well, most controversial type budget enhancements till then, knowing that we may or may not have those to consider. So we could technically finalize the session and be done, to be honest. We put everything in place. We do need to support the governor in terms of, you know, making sure that the emergency declaration continues as long as we needed to, to continue to draw the federal funds down to the state and the cities and counties. So we might have an action on that, but we did pass the budget, yeah.
And that, on that first CARES Act, which I think was the third kind of relief bill that came out of Congress, I think there was about $1 billion that came to the state. And is there somewhere to kind of track where that money's, you've talked a little bit about it, but is there somewhere that, somewhere that somebody could go to and just kind of track the big chunks of that?
If I can find one, I will send it to you. I can get ahold of the administration today and see if we've got anywhere where we're going to be tracking, because I know that people are anticipating where that money's going, how much of it's going to get distributed. There are formulas that determine how it gets distributed down, but there's a big interest, I know, by the locals, local municipalities and counties not to let the state necessarily control all that, but to give some local control to some of that money and how it's spent.
Yeah, I think that would be good in terms of transparency for citizens at large. And, you know, I know that, you know, Congress is debating whether there's going to be another bill that would be, I know some of the, some of our national political leaders would like to see more money allocated to the states for state government and local governments, but, you know, that's, we'll just have to wait and see. But I know that in that third, that CARES Act, that third major bill, that there was around $1 billion that came to the state, so, okay, that's good. I don't think I have anything else. It was a good rundown, and unless you have anything else, I really appreciate you coming by. And that's really, really a good update, and I hope our citizens, if you have any questions, you can contact Representative.
Contact me, jeff.pittman@house.kas.gov, or my phone number, 913-912-3459. You know, if folks, in particular, I know that I've had a lot of calls, you know, I get calls and emails every day, messages every day, from, like I said, there's a lot of concern right now, just to call it out, both on the economy and local businesses and how we're going to operate, but also just from the inmates' family members, as well as the correction workers, to ensure that, you know, the state's doing the right thing. I'm not Control at DCF, or Department of Corrections, but I can absolutely weigh in and let your voices be heard, so do reach out if you need, if you want some assistance there. Thanks so much for coming out here. Big shout out to all the citizens out there. Thanks for hanging in here through this.
Thank you very much, and have a good rest of your Wednesday.
Okay.
I'm going to start off where I normally do, I'm going to give a brief review of the statistics with respect to COVID-19, the health crisis portion of it, begin at the state. Now, this information is as of, it's 24 hours old, it was as of yesterday, 9:00 AM. But at the state level, there were 5,458 cases, in other words, people who have tested positive for COVID-19, hospitalizations, 566, deaths across the state, 137. And that, I did the little math, and that's about a 2.5% death rate, which is, any, one death is too many, but that's what it equates to here in Kansas, and I think compared to what's going on nationally, nationally, I believe that that death rate is somewhere between 5% and 6%, because we are well above a million cases, people who have tested positive for COVID-19 within our nation. And then the deaths are up about 71,000 or 72,000 as of last evening, I believe, so just give you a little comparison there. In terms of cases, people who have tested positive by age group, the age group of 35 through 44 years old, 1,021 citizens in that age group have tested positive, that equates to 18.7%. That's the largest percentages of people who have tested positive are in that age group, 35 to 44. Next is the age group 25 to 34 years of age, 997 people, citizens, and that's an 18.3% of the overall total of people who have tested positive. And finally, in third place, there are cases by age group, 45 to 54 years of age, 984, which represents 18% of the overall number of citizens in Kansas who have been tested. The deaths by age group, and this is not surprising based on what we've experienced, the nation has experienced over the last two to three months, 85-plus years in Kansas, 56 of our citizens, 85 or older have died, 56, and that represents 47% of the people who have unfortunately lost their life to COVID-19. The next age group is 75 years to 84 years, there's been 32 citizens who have lost their life due to COVID. That represents 23.9% of the overall deaths within the state. And then 65 through 74, these are all the upper age brackets, 27 deaths in that particular age group, which represents 17.5%. So clearly, as people get older, they have comorbidities, hypertension, diabetes, may have had, been in cancer remission, those type of things, so these statistics aren't surprising, but it is, it is pretty stark. And finally, you know, the age group that had the most positive tests, and I had mentioned 35 through 44 years old, there's only two of those people in that age group who have passed away, which is, which is good from the standpoint of being low, and that represents 0.8% of the people who have died in Kansas due to COVID-19. And the last thing I'd like to say in terms of testing rates, there have been over 40,000 people tested in the state of Kansas, and the percent positive of people, of people who have been tested is 13.6%. And overall, based on a population of 1,000 people, based on, you know, 1,000 people, the rate of testing is the rate of testing is 13.76% of the population is being tested. So, and I just would like to say in Leavenworth County, that percentage, based on 1,000 again, is 30.77. So testing is more prevalent, is happening at a higher rate than Kansas overall, and actually, Leavenworth County in terms of that percentage of testing is rates rather high. It's not at the top, but it's right up there, I would say, in the top five or six. There's some counties out in southwestern Kansas, such as Ford County, and then there's another county out there who have rates, testing rates of about 60%. Of course, they're less populated, but I believe that this testing, for instance, in Ford County, is tied to a meatpacking plant out there where they've had an outbreak of people being tested who have contracted the virus and who have been tested. So we're in pretty good shape in terms of at least our rate of testing within Leavenworth County. And I am aware from Mr. Jamie Miller, the Public Health Officer for Leavenworth County, that over the last two weeks, and I don't know the exact numbers, but more tests have become available to the county, which is good, and I believe accounts for that, you know, rather healthy testing rate of 30.77. And we'd like to get it higher, but compared to other counties, we're in pretty good shape. I'm going to take a look at this chart up here to talk about Leavenworth County. This was yesterday as of, I believe it was either, no, 3:00 PM. Yes, when their stats come in. This is the chart. Over here is the geographical laydown of Leavenworth County. This is the city of Leavenworth, so 103 cases, people have tested positive for COVID-19. Just wait up. That's okay. We'll deal with it. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that slide back up there, but, yeah, it's back up there. So, and this 461, that represents, you know, the, pretty much the Lansing Correctional Facility and the 430 inmates that Representative Pittman talked about in 23 community. The 23 community are staff there at the Lansing Correctional Facility. And of course, those people come back into our community and I believe they're being isolated, probably at their homes, and, because a lot of those prison staff live in Lansing, Leavenworth, or out in the county someplace. And then the number of deaths, six, I believe last week when I reported it was five, so there's been one more death reported within the county due to COVID-19. There's three Lansing Correctional Facility inmates and three in the community at the community level. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about this. I am a little concerned. This is the chart that shows the cumulative number of cases within the county, and that's 164. 103 of those are from the city of Leavenworth. And this graph down here, the green, is the number of new cases, people test, the number of new people testing positive for COVID each and every day. And over the last two weeks, I mean, it's up and down, but we do see numbers that are like nine and seven and eight, 13 a couple of days ago, and that is concerning. I mean, it would be best if we could keep it down at one or two or, you know, hopefully zero, but, so these spikes, you know, aren't good. And I guess the point is, is we've got to keep our focus on doing the social distancing when we're out in the community of wearing masks while it's not mandatory. I know I, as your mayor, am asking you to do that when you're out and about, and we'll talk a little bit about why that's important, which is illustrated in this chart. Got this off Facebook and it's accurate. I don't think it came from the CDC, but, you know, the purpose of the mask is to protect other people from, possibly if you're asymptomatic, because it does take a while for these symptoms to manifest themselves and, you know, anywhere up to seven to 14 days. So if you're, if you don't know, you're over here, and if you're, if you have a mask on and then you're interacting with people out in the community who are unaffected, the chance of transmission is a medium chance, a medium risk of transmission. So you go, and that chance of transmission decreases, is lower if both you, as a person who, you know, appears to be healthy but may not be because you're asymptomatic, you know, you're wearing a mask and then somebody that you come in contact with, hopefully even at the six-foot distance, but is wearing a mask, it's a low chance of transmission, very low, is when we maintain and sustain the six feet of distance between people out in the local community, whether it be at a business, whether it's going to be at restaurants that are under this phase one, and I'll talk about that, governor's phase one plan, or able to reopen for, you know, for dining, for dining in, and not all restaurants are doing that right away, but they are authorized to do that during phase one. And then virtually none if you're, if you stay at home. And of course, the point here is if you don't have to go out, if there aren't essential things that you don't have to get done, I know people have to go to work, have to get groceries, those type of things, go to the pharmacy to get medication, but you can see that that's why the stay at home is so critical. But this is the one that I wanted to kind of concentrate on, and if we can do that and do better at that, I mean, most, many people, the majority of the people are doing that, but there are people within our community, I think, who could do a little bit better as far as that goes. I've been at one business within the last week and I would say, and it was doing a pretty good business, but I would say only about 30% of the people who were the customers had masks on. My wife and I did, but I would say it was only about 30%. And of course, if the employees at these various businesses could wear masks, that would be fantastic, and I know they're encouraged to do that as part of this phase one order. And I'll get into a few specifics from the county order, which supplemented the governor's order, which came out last Thursday and was effective on the 4th of May, which was Monday, at 0001, one minute after midnight is when it became effective. Let me just talk, just real quick, just give a little bit about, I'm not going to get into the details of the governor's order. The governor's order, you can go to the Leavenworth County COVID-19 webpage, website. We have a link from our website, the city's website, to that particular page, and it has the governor's order, which was executive order number 2029, which talks about all the provisions of this phase one. And phase one of a, really a three-phase plan, and just generally during phase one, the governor will continue evaluating the state's progress and if appropriate, issue a new executive order, moving the statewide baseline to phase two. And as I said, phase one began on, at like one minute after midnight, May 4th, 2020, at, that's when that phase one took effect. Phase two will, won't occur, will not occur any sooner than May 18th, 2020. And then phase three will not occur, will occur no sooner than June 1st, 2020. So there's about two weeks between each one of these phases, but she reserves the right to continue to evaluate the state's progress and if appropriate, issue a new executive order moving on to the next phase. And then finally, at some point, there'll be a phase out, and this will occur no sooner than June 15th, 2020. So all that information is available at the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, which you can get to through the county's public health COVID-19 webpage, or go straight to the webpage for the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Let me just highlight a few things from Leavenworth County's plan for reopening. And they issued theirs, I believe it was last Friday, I think it was last Friday they issued. They had a meeting on Friday and they issued it, their plan for reopening, which doesn't get into a lot of specifics, it just kind of reinforces what the governor issued as far as her plan for phase one. But this document, the county's plan for reopening, is prepared to offer guidance on a safe, stepwise reopening of Leavenworth County, and the whole purpose is to continue to take measures to ensure the safety of our most vulnerable populations and to continue to ensure the community's ability to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. And in an effort to do this, the Leavenworth County Health Department is implementing guidelines to work in conjunction with the governor's plan to reopen Kansas, and we're in phase one of that plan right now. Guiding principles to be followed by all businesses and organizations, just, I'll just highlight a few. When able, continuing to stay at home is recommended. I've already talked about that. Social distancing measures should continue to be followed, stay six feet away from others, interact only with people of the same household when possible, and limit non-essential travel. Or, you know, I've kind of reviewed that already. Masks should, not required, but should strongly encouraged to be worn in all public places. And then the community should, must, should, practice good hand hygiene, simple, straightforward, and I think this is something that most of us are doing, hopefully all of us, but certainly most of us, because that is a practice that we have to continue regardless of going forward, regardless of, this is something that has to continue into the future as far as I'm concerned, either using soap and water or hand sanitizer. Businesses that are identified in the Kansas Essential Functions Framework will continue to follow state and federal guidelines in relation to occupancy restrictions and providing services, and that was all outlined in the phase one, the governor's phase one plan, executive order 2029. And businesses should follow industry-specific guidelines, and I know our businesses are doing that, and that's, they feel and they know that that's their responsibility, as far as I can see, that they are doing that, and very, very critical that these, and these industries do have good guidelines and good best practices that our businesses will follow as they reopen. The guidance to, the phase one guidance from Leavenworth County Health Department for restaurants is follow all U.S. Food and Drug Administration food code requirements, prioritize delivery, takeout, and curbside service. Inside service is allowed based on state regulations and what's in that phase one governor's order. All restaurant or dining room playgrounds should be closed, and these guidelines do not apply to dine-in services in hospitals, healthcare facilities, nursing homes, or other long-term care facilities. And then very quickly, retail, where applicable, provide shopping cart sanitation supplies, maintain social distancing, consider one-way flow of movement through store indicated by floor marks. Employees should wear masks at all times, hand sanitizers should be readily available throughout the premises. Once again, the emphasis on should, but clearly a best practice that I hope most of our employers follow. And marks should be applied to the floor in the area adjacent to each cash register to indicate where to wait for checkout. I believe most of our businesses, particularly the grocery stores and big box stores, are doing that. Plexiglass or glass barriers should be installed at checkout lanes. So I will, the only other thing I'll say is that for parks and public spaces, the guidance from the county is parks and public spaces are open, but use of playground equipment and picnic tables is prohibited. So that's kind of a rundown, a very quick summary, and once again, the Leavenworth County Plan for Reopening, two and a half pages on their COVID-19 website, and I encourage our citizens to read that. I'm going to transition to city services. The dog park. Today at noon, the dog park will open. So we're just about there in about 15 minutes. Water fountains will not be available at this time. Our crews worked on the park last week to prepare for reopening. Please remember to be safe, courteous, and practice social distancing. The campground. Beginning Friday, the campground will be open to campers with units that include contained plumbing, including their own restroom facilities. At this time, seven sites will be available for use in order to follow social distancing guidelines. We will evaluate expanding the users in the coming weeks. Farmer's Market. The city of Leavenworth and the Leavenworth Farmer's Market work together to open the market beginning this Saturday, this coming Saturday, as a drive-through market. The first market of 2020 will be Saturday, May 9th, from 7:30 AM to noon at Haymarket Square. Please note, it will be operated by drive-through only. Customers are required to stay in their vehicles, no exceptions. Entrance to the market will be on the south end of 7th Street. From there, traffic will wrap around the pavilion and exit on the north end of 7th Street. Customers are urged to preorder or have exact change. Visit the Farmer's Market Facebook page at www.facebook.com/LVFarmer'sMarket backslash for more information. So that's something, a good activity, a very traditional and a very popular service and activity that will be available come this Saturday, May 9th. Recycling Center and Brush Site. The first week of recycling and brush seemed to go very well. That was last week. Saturday was busy as we had 133 residents use the first Saturday bulk item service and had 125 more through the recycling center. For three days of recycling, we had 347 cars go through. This week and next, we will have the same schedule, recycling on Tuesday and Wednesday, and brush Thursday and Friday, and both sites will be open on this coming Saturday. Woolman Pool. The city will make a decision by the end of next week on the status of Woolman Pool for the summer. While it is unlikely the pool will open on May 25th, which is normally the day within the year that the pool opens, the staff has prepared for a delayed opening in June, if possible and if appropriate. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Kramer, just to cover a few other notes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You covered most, all the relevant city information. If you have questions, feel free to give us a call about the hours, about the items that you can bring. I know we've had a lot of activity at the brush site and at the recycle center. We also thank you for your patience as you go through those. Our employees, this is kind of new to them too, operating such a different way for the recycle center, the campground, the dog park, and all those uses. Just a couple other things for those interested. We have just, I think, today officially moved the dog tags, pushed them back again, so the dog tags now won't be due until June 30th. I think a lot of vets in the area have some restrictions on the animals they're seeing in the access they have. So again, we've pushed that back to June 30th. We continue to get questions about trash bags. Once again, those are delivered by coordination with the city and then the Lions Club, Leavenworth Lions. They're going to break the delivery up over two different Saturdays, starting May 30th and then June 6th. So hopefully by the end of the day on June 6th, everybody will have had delivered some trash bags. I know we've been working with them. That's a large undertaking, so we're happy that that's about complete. The city has job openings, if you're interested, on the city's website. We have positions for firefighters, for solid waste collectors, and I believe wastewater treatment plant. So that's all I have for the city.
Okay, I just, I'll take a couple of minutes just to talk a little bit about our small businesses, and Representative Pittman kind of mentioned that paycheck protection program. And generally, what I can ascertain, and we had Mr. Steve Jack, who's the Executive Director of Leavenworth County Development Corporation, give his semi-annual update to the City Commission last evening, had some really good information, and part of it was, there's, he talked about a survey that was conducted in the KC metro area between April 17th and April 24th, and this was done by the KC Chamber, the Kansas City Area Development Council, and KC Source Link, along with several area, local, and minority chambers of commerce, and they conducted this business survey measuring the economic impact of the coronavirus and charting the measures employers are using to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The regional survey drew responses from 565 area employers and did provide valuable data on how the virus and area shutdown orders are impacting. valuable da- data on how the virus and area shutdown orders are impacting minority and women-owned businesses, micro businesses, startups, and traditional small businesses, and shows how these businesses are responding, responding to federal relief measures. And the surveys are um, uh, summarized and can be accessed at the Leavenworth County Development Corporation website, which has got an excellent COVID nineteen webpage. And I would, if, and citizens are interested in a, provide, in finding out a little bit more detail, I would encourage you to go, uh, go to that website and check out the results of this particular uh, business survey that I just mentioned. Just very quickly, um, one of the key takeaways is that, at least when this was done, a couple of weeks ago, our business owners across the region, across the metro area, I'm sorry, across the metro area, um, including in our, in our community, the city of Leavenworth and, and the county, um, fifty-eight percent of the respondents to the survey expect demand for products and services to be back to February twenty twenty levels in six months. Seventy percent of the respondents expect to retain seventy-five to a hundred percent of their pre-COVID nineteen workforce. And um, I think part of that, uh, maybe a good deal of that is the, this paycheck protection program, plus the emergency injury disaster loans that many, that a good number of our small businesses were able to get directly through the S B A. It's been a program that's been around for twenty to, twenty to twenty-five years. And ninety percent of the respondents to this particular survey have retained all employees or expect to rehire all employees laid off. Um, however, only about half of minority-owned companies expect to retain seventy-six to a hundred percent of, of their workforce. And finally, ninety-six percent of respondents were aware of the paycheck protection program, the PPP, and/or economic injury disaster loans, the idle loans that I just talked about. And that's good, because I felt that that was one of our responsibilities as the city government, um, working with and, and uh, sharing information with the Leavenworth Main Street and Leavenworth County Development Corporation in terms of just making sure that that information was readily available, easy to access, fairly easy to understand. And then, then it was up to the business owners to get with their, with their bankers, you know, work through what they needed as far as filling out the applications. And then I know that, uh, the first round, I think I reported this a couple of weeks ago, the bankers here within the city of Leavenworth, within, you know, our county, and uh, regionally, not re- well, across the state, have really leaned forward in the foxhole to help and make it as easy as possible for small business owners and their clients to fill out those applications, get the paperwork in. And, and that was done. And I, that first COVID, uh, that third, that first CARES Act, which provided, um, I think it was close to five hundred billion, I think it was four hundred and sixty-four billion. Uh, many of our small businesses, many, uh, were able to actually get funds deposited in their bank accounts because they were successful in getting their applications in and, and getting funded uh, through that first CARES Act. Now, the, the second CARES Act, or the fourth bill that was passed about uh, ten days ago, um, provides a second tranche of money. I think it's three hundred and ten billion dollars for uh, small businesses. And what, uh, Mr. Jack was able to tell us last night, he talked to some of the bankers, and they were, uh, they were comfortable that the small businesses that had their applications completed and just needed to be resubmitted, which they were, uh, a week ago, this, this past Monday, a week ago, um, that, that uh, they were being successful. Uh, their applications were approved and the money was being deposited in our small business, in the, in the, uh, the accounts of small businesses. Now, I, I would think maybe there are some exceptions, but generally, I think that program, um, although there were some hiccups in terms of it, uh, being rolled out, has, has been a success. And um, we'll see in terms of, if there's certain, uh, in terms of retention of the employee workforce, if these businesses who take the loans through the pay, the paycheck protection program, if they can do that through the end of June, there's a good chance that uh, those loans will be forgiven, essentially turning into a grant. But, you know, that remains to be seen. It depends on the criteria and whether these uh, businesses were able to retain and meet the metrics that the federal government has set in terms of retaining their employees. But hopefully, that'll be the case with the great majority of our uh, businesses. So, uh, that uh, concludes uh, the substance of the update and the town hall today. Uh, and I'll just remind folks that what we, our mission as the city commission, uh, has been, and our overriding priority for the city commission, the city manager and city staff, has been to do our very best to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of all the citizens within our city. And uh, in doing that, we've been focusing on the uh, the effort to share pertinent and accurate information relating to COVID nineteen. And uh, because information and accurate information delivered in a timely fashion really is very, very critical, uh, to people at least having good situational awareness of what's going on, how these programs, how the health crisis, how the economic crisis is affecting themselves, their families, and their community. And we've adjusted the delivery of services. Uh, where you, uh, you know, at the beginning of this uh, COVID nineteen health crisis, uh, we, we had to cut back and, and curtail those activities. And now you can see over the last two weeks, we're, you know, maintaining social distancing and other best practices. We're able to reopen some of our uh, facilities, some of our services. And that's a good thing. And if there are any questions, I believe you can go, you can go to our website or check out the Facebook posts or Twitter posts that come out from our city public information officer, Ms. Melissa Bauer, to stay up to speed on that information. And then finally, I just talked about it, trying to advocate for our small businesses, uh, just by making sure that, uh, they're aware of where this information is. And just being a good player, a good team player with the Leavenworth Main Street, Leavenworth County Development Corporation, our bankers, in terms of getting good in- information out to our small businesses so that they can get through the next two, two to three months. And then, uh, as we get further opening of businesses and economic activity increases, that they'll be able to uh, get back to where, to close to where they were over time, uh, before we, you know, had this COVID nineteen health crisis and the, all the economic consequences that um, were a result of that health crisis. So, um, I'll just remind everybody to um, stay safe, uh, stay healthy. When you can, uh, stay home. I, I know everyone has to go out for essential activities, and uh, we've talked about that already. But when you do, just encourage everybody to uh, you know, wear the cloth masks, of which many of our citizens within our community have made, some citizens have made thousands of masks, and they've been distributed uh, throughout our community. So, I know that's something that I've thanked, uh, a few of them who are aware of making the mask, and are many probably I'm not aware of who've done this. But once again, thank you to these uh, people, mostly, mostly women. But um, this has been a great uh, service that they provided over the last couple of months. And we should take advantage of their work. And then the social distancing, um, is very, very important. We're just gonna have to continue to do that for the foreseeable future. And just remember that people who are out there on the front lines, and particularly our healthcare workers in all the various areas, um, uh, they're doing great work and um, they're very courageous. They've got great expertise. And the people who are out there, our grocery workers, people working in um, our drugstores, our pharmacies, our first responders. Um, and I'd also like to thank, uh, Mr. Jamie Miller and his public health team. They've been doing an outstanding job. They've been working, uh, I believe, twenty-four, seven, or close to it, over the last two to two and a half months. And uh, been keeping up with everything. And I'd like to just publicly thank him and the work of his, of his staff, uh, in terms of, uh, dealing with this particular crisis and uh, getting the word out to the cities. Um, and um, just overall doing a great job. So, that finishes our Facebook Live Town Hall for today. Well, at this point, uh, if you have questions, go ahead and submit them. If you didn't submit them during the town hall, if you have any suggestions on how we could maybe revise the format to give you information that maybe we aren't giving you that would be more helpful, uh, please let us know. And we can make some adjustments. But at this point, we'll have, uh, we'll plan on having the next one a week from today. Um, and that'll be the ninth Facebook Live Town Hall from your city commission and from the city of Leavenworth. So, with that, uh, have a good rest of your Wednesday and a good uh, good remainder of the week. Thank you.